All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's nine o'clock. Today is Tuesday, June 13, 2023. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very honored and privileged today to have once again our favorite pastor here, Mike McMahon, and his lovely wife, Jeannie, to give the invocation to us today. Pastor McMahon.
This is a prayer, actually, that Sandy wrote. She presented it to the Commissioners' Court maybe a year or a year and a half ago. And I thought it would be appropriate to do so again this morning. So if you'll bow your heads with me, please. Father, America is hurting. We've had pandemics. We have racial issues. We have job loss. We've got political division, and they've caused great suffering. And yet, we as believers are called to be salt and light on the earth. As Christians, we can begin healing our land through prayer and action. Let us come together not just by words but by a faith that produces works. The love and grace of God can begin turning the tide of America. We look to you and to you only, Lord. Help us to make wise decisions that move our country in the right direction. Help us to do our part in praying and in staying with what we know is right according to the truth of your word. Teach us to make our actions count and our words matter and line them both up to your sense of righteousness, not ours. Guide us with your eye. Grip us with your strong arm. Teach us what we need to know to make our lives and our nation count for you. And it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
(inaudible).
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible).
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 Okay. That was really a nice prayer. Thank you for that, Sandy. Thank you very much. Okay. We have no special presentation, no service awards today, so now we get right into the citizens' comments at large. And so far, I have one, and the first one is Greg Harrell.
Judge, can I say something with the court's indulgence before we start this?
Sure.
The Texas Government Code, Section 551-007, is the place to start here. And it was added to the government code back in 2019, so it's a fairly recent statute. And it says, 551-07C states, "A government body may adopt reasonable rules regarding the public's right to address the body." And this Commissioners' Court has adopted rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court. They're online. They're readily available for anyone who wants to go take a look at them, pull them up, print them off, and read them. And item one of our rules of decorum point out that we will conduct our business in accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act. So it refers back to the statute I just cited. And what I would like to do with the court's indulgence is to read part of our Rules of Decorum, which we modified or amended back in February, I believe. And I will read section number, Roman numeral four, E. "It is the intention of the Commissioners' Court to provide an open access to the citizens of Hood County to address the Commissioners' Court and express themselves on issues of county government. Members of the public are reminded that the Hood County Commissioners' Court is a constitutional court with both judicial and legislative powers. It's created under Article 5, Section 1 and Section 18 of the Texas Constitution. As a constitutional court, the Hood County Commissioners' Court also possesses the power to issue a contempt of court citation under Section 81-024 of the Texas Local Government Code. Accordingly, members of the public in attendance at any regular, special, or emergency meeting of the court shall conduct themselves with proper respect and decorum in speaking to or and/or addressing the court, in participating in public discussions before the court, and in all actions in the presence of the court. Proper attire for men, women, and children is mandatory. Those members of the public who are inappropriately attired and who do not conduct themselves in an orderly and appropriate manner will be ordered to leave the meeting. Refusal to abide by the court's order and/or continued disruption of the meeting may result in a contempt of court citation." Further reading, Section Roman numeral four F says, and I think the judge has intimated this more than once, "It is not the intention of the Hood County Commissioners' Court to provide a public forum for the demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the court to allow a member or members of the public to insult the honesty and/or integrity of the court as a body or any member or members of the court, including all of us up here, individually or collectively. Accordingly, profane, insulting, or threatening language directed toward the court or any person in the court's presence and/or racial, ethnic, or gender slurs or epithets will not be tolerated." These rules do not prohibit public criticism of the Commissioners' Court, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. Subsection 4G, "Violation of these rules may result in the following: cancellations of the speaker's time, removal from the courtroom, a contempt citation, or any other criminal or civil sanctions that may be authorized under the Constitution statutes and codes of this state." Thank you.
Okay. That's something that I have stated before here many times and asked everybody to follow in that, again, these rules do not prohibit public criticism of Commissioners' Court, including the criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service of here. But just to talk about trying to impugn the integrity of anybody up here for any reason whatsoever is not allowed. So with that being stated again, Greg Harrell, you are our first speaker. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I actually have two issues, and I won't take all of the time that you've allotted for me here. Actually, one of them comes to mind because of what Commissioner Eagle just spoke and read into the record. The first issue has to do with actually road conditions here in the county. And I recognize that what I am going to bring up may not be the specific purview of the county itself, but I've contacted Texas DOT and haven't had a response from them. And I thought I would bring this issue and this item to your attention just so that you can be aware of it, and perhaps you can use your influence to get some action taken on these items. I've noticed that around the county in various areas, there's been a lot of guardrail damage to, in particular, I'm aware of two items that have existed for quite a while. And in the past, when we had guardrail damage, the signs have gone up, and over the course of several weeks, the issues with the guardrails were taken care of, and we go on down the road, no pun intended. In this particular case, what I've noticed is we have a development where a lot of the times when guardrails get damaged, they stay like that. The signs go up, the warning signs go up, and no action is taken for literally months following the incident or the accident that caused the damage. And in some cases, the road is actually impeded. I'm talking about two specific items that I could bring to your attention. One is on Highway 51 North, just north of the Lantana entrance. That's been like that. There's an area there that has not been addressed, and it's been like that for several months. Also, on Highway 167, just north and east of the intersection with Highway 51, there's been guardrail damage there, which actually impedes the width of the roadway as you approach a little bridge in that area. And that's been like that for at least four months. So I would just ask the Commissioners to be aware of this issue, and to the extent that you have influence in this area, we need to get some of these items taken care of in a more timely fashion. So something's changed there. Thank you. In regards to what Commissioner Eagle read into the record, I just wanted to echo your sentiments. As you know, I come here quite often, and I just sit back and observe the conduct and the actions of the court. I will tell you that as a citizen, an interested citizen and a participant in some of these sessions, I see each and every one of you as doing the best for Hood County when you really try to come into unity. And I know that there is going to be division because you are each individuals, and I pray the Lord's wisdom over you as you make decisions on the behalf of the citizens of the county. However, when we allow people to come in here and stand at this dais or this podium that I'm standing at right now and literally demean individual Commissioners, it really causes the tone and the conduct of this meeting to change. You literally can see the conduct and the tone of the meeting change. So I applaud you, Commissioner Eagle, for reading into the record. I would ask all of you to make sure that you're acting in unity. The Bible says that how good and pleasant it is when the brothers and sister dwell in unity. And I just pray that over each and every one of you. Let's get the people's work done. I know that you guys don't see eye to eye on everything, but I know that you do your best when you try to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker at large is Michael Davis.
I love how you speak on decorum. You know, you got mad because your buddy Biggers got thrown out. And so all of a sudden, you say, hey, let's open public comments. Oh, no, it's not working out to our advantage, you know? So we're going to act like, you know, everybody's picking on me. Wow. Anyway, so I did open records request for Nate Criswell's investigation, and then whenever he, sorry. I did an open records request whenever Nate Criswell beat up his ex-wife. And I didn't get it. You know, Dave Eagle sits there and tells us, oh, if you want to know anything, just go ahead and do an open records request. Well, I didn't get it because they said that it was still open, all right? And I did some checking around. They said, no, it's not open. But you know, I got it anyways, all right? I got it anyways, and I'm releasing it to everybody. HoodCountyPolitics.com, all right? Ryan Sinclair wants to hide behind, you know, his position and stroke the backs of the people that are in this town. We'd go like that for, there's nothing wrong. I'm not doing anything wrong. Nothing. You don't like what I have to say, so therefore you want to violate my First Amendment.
Please address the court. Mr. Davis, please address the court.
Well, no, you know what? If we want to talk about being constitutional and everything, this is my First Amendment right right now.
It is.
I'm doing nothing wrong. And you're not supposed to speak while I'm speaking. So I'm releasing it to everybody. HoodCountyPolitics.com. Weekly, sometimes twice a week, I hear about things that have happened in the judicial system in this town. And it all starts with the DA. Ryan Sinclair, all the way up to Judge Haddix, all the way up to Rob Christian. You want to talk about dropping the ball. I heard a story about a 14-year-old girl who got raped by her stepfather. More than sufficient evidence, and Rob Christian is quoted as saying, this is going to be the embarrassment in my career. He got away. And then he got his whole record expunged. Yeah, it's bad. I spoke to the mother this weekend. And you got Nate Criswell beating Tarab's wife. The video is on there, by the way, you know, along with his subscriptions to OnlyFans and all his trips to the liquor store. You know, I speak the truth. I don't come up here and throw my opinion out. All I do is I come up and I say exactly what has happened, and I don't throw my personal opinion on it. So the truth hurts, y'all? Oh, well. Start your act up. Appreciate it.
Next is Zach Maxwell.
Today, I'd like to start off with doing something that I'd like to be able to do a little bit more often, or at least while the tenure on court. And I'd like to echo and appreciate Dave Eagle's words the other night, the other night at the last Hood County Republican Party meeting. He called for unity. He called for the antics to stop. He called, we had a nice conversation with several of us out in front of the Annex One where we talked about a host of things that we would like to end in this county. All the hate, all the vitriol, the sensational politics, to be able to come together and get the people's work done. Unfortunately, until I see actions behind those words, I have to take them for what they are and just words. But today, I would like to present you with some stuff that I've been struggling with because, as a Christian, it is very difficult for people to understand the true weight of being able to just let something go. I've had many people tell me that I need to just let stuff go, but there's a balance that we have to weigh. If you just let stuff go every time something happens to you, whenever somebody is habitually doing something towards you, they're going to do it to somebody else, and they're just going to keep going. So there is a balance between grace and justice that we need to find as a community and move forward. Katie Lang, I would like the court, the DA's office, the sheriff's office, somebody to please stand up and investigate what's going on with her misconduct. And I'm not throwing accusations that I can't back up. I'm simply asking for something to be done because we have had situations to where we, you know, she has turned on the mics early for Commissioners' Court only in order to spy on Commissioners, and that's exactly what has been done. I've been privy to conversations in the past when I used to work very closely with her and her husband as his chief of staff. Dave Eagle and I talked about that that night, and you're free to change your opinion on that. But I told him, I said, you know good and well exactly why, because we have been privy to information, whether you agree with it or not, to conversations where we know exactly why those recordings were turned on early, and it is to spy using public property to do it on your political enemies. And now, I'm at a loss as to what to do because after her husband and her, you know, had gone on to their Blue Shark show and said many nasty things about me and have posted publicly pictures of my house all over Facebook and all over social media where my family lived, now they have moved into that house. And I went to go do public work. I had to go file some records at the county office. There is no love lost between me and the Lang family. I don't want to talk to them. I've made it very clear. I've been very nice and cordial. But she approached me a couple of times that day, and in one of those instances, she decided to quab and say, hey, would you like your mail back? I said, you have my mail? She's like, yeah, a whole bunch of it, sitting on my counter. I said, and she's like, yeah, a lot of your wife's stuff. And I said, okay, well, I sure would like that. And then we were interrupted by doing business, and she left, and I had to wait for her, and I picked up the conversation. And that last part of the conversation, I recorded, and I have a recording of that, and I plan on handing that over to whoever would like, law enforcement, the DA's office, whoever would like to do something about it. But I'm at a loss as to who actually will because that's a crime. She mentioned having things that were, deal with my wife's work, among other things, and it's very disturbing. But we do have a problem in this county, and I'd like for somebody to do something about it, please. Thank you.
Next, Katie Lang.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. First of all, I can't even believe I'm up here. Zach did come into my office. He had some business to do, and all I did was say hi, Zach. If he has a recording, I offer him to go ahead and put it out there because I did nothing wrong. I have done nothing wrong. I did move into a house that's a rental, and we did receive some mail, but my husband sent it back, and I told him that he sent it back, returned to sender. So he asked me what type of mail did I receive, anything from the state, from him, for him. I said, no, it was mostly his wife's mail. I remember seeing something about real estate, but that's, I said, it really wasn't my concern. My husband was handling it. So I don't know why he comes up here and lies to the court. And, you know, basically, the court, this is not a town hall where you come up and you discuss things. This needs to be court issues. You don't need to be standing up here bashing people like what Michael Davis just did. He needs to be thrown out. You know, everybody's got the right to speak, but in this court, it's, if you're not doing Commissioner Court work, you're just standing up here bashing on the commissioner or bashing on a citizen, that's not right, and it's in your policy, and I would like you to adhere to it. You need to throw these people out. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. That's all of the comments at large. Then we're going into our regular miscellaneous business then. And the first item is, "Discuss and consider a request from the Acton Cemetery Board of Directors to place roadbase material on the driving lanes within the Acton Cemetery to correct erosion areas and take appropriate action." Does anybody wish to address that?
Yes, I was approached by, actually, Andy Resch, former county judge. He's on the board at Acton Cemetery. Several of the roads have had significant washout, and he's asking that the county, which has done in the past, to come in and put down a little bit of roadbase and level it out to where the roads and the ruts are not as worn out as they are today. And I've spoken with Don Lenny. He's, you know, addressed it, and he's gone out and actually looked at it also.
Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Lenny?
Judge, Commissioners, I did contact our county attorney. It is not a county cemetery, and he's reviewed it, and he's approved. He said he's good with it.
Okay. What do you think the cost of it would be?
For the base material, it would be $187.50.
So I did also talk to Mr. Lenny and asked a few more questions. The Acton, as he said, the roadbase, 25 tons of roadbase, it's $187.50. However, there wasn't any discussion in the email about manpower and hours and equipment. So he got back with me, and he said it would be approximately five employees working eight hours. So that would be a total of about 40 hours at an estimated cost. I just looked at the salary sheets and said, you know, the average salary cost, that's between $1,000 and $1,100, plus the use of five pieces of equipment, one or possibly two skid steer loaders, two dump trucks, one steel-wheeled roller. So here are my concerns. This is a state park. It's not county property. Mr. Lenny has confirmed that his staff is fully booked with work to do on behalf of the county taxpayers. Therefore, this project would be worked at the expense of other projects that serve the taxpayers of Hood County. Also, take into consideration the wear and tear on the county equipment that the taxpayers are paying for repairs and to maintain. Other concerns that I have is liability. Liability exposure for county employees getting injured on that property, equipment being damaged, or county equipment damaging something at the cemetery that's not county property. I don't like the precedent that this is set to do work that's not on county property. And I understand that Mr. Mills has looked into this legality of this and that there is an exception to do work at a cemetery if there's a marker that's, I think, over 50 years old. However, just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should do something. So I would, with that said, I would make the motion to table this agenda item as it is not in the best interests of the county taxpayers.
Anybody else have anything to say? Or we?
Yeah, you hate to do this, but this is a terrible precedence to start. I'm concerned that we end up spending a whole lot of road ops time and materials at various cemeteries around the county. I agree. I agree with Commissioner Samuelson that that's probably not somewhere we need to go. I'll second that motion to table.
Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Samuelson to table the request from the Acton Cemetery Board of Directors, place roadbase material on the driving lanes within the Acton Cemetery to correct erosion errors and take appropriate action. Do you have a second?
Yeah. I seconded. Yes, sir.
A second by Commissioner Andrews. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of tabling item to request the, consider the request from the Acton Board of Directors, place roadbase material on the driving lanes within the Acton Cemetery to correct erosion errors and take appropriate action. Do you have a second?
Yeah. I seconded. Yes, sir.
A second by Commissioner Andrews. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of tabling item to request the, consider the request from the Acton Board of Directors, place roadbase on the driving lanes within the Acton Cemetery. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So the motion is tabled by three.
So, the motion is tabled by three to two. Okay, this brings us to item number two. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow AgriLife Extension and Lake Granberry Master Gardeners to place a sign facing Deputy Larry Miller Drive. Yes, how are you doing? Good to see you.
Good morning. I'm good, how are you? Good to see y'all. So, hopefully, our request is pretty easy. There was an existing sign back at the back of the garden back here that was used to display information on a now outdated program. So our master gardeners have taken it down to repair it, update the information, and so we're looking to just move it somewhere a little more visible and be able to advertise that garden and get some more traffic in there. So, I don't know, did, do you guys get this, I believe? Okay. So, I'm, towards the end of your slides there, there's a map that shows you exactly where it's going. So it's moving from the back of the garden to the front of the garden. The master gardeners will pay for it all, do all the labor, we're just asking for permission to move it. So, do you have any questions on where it's going, what it's doing, anything like that?
Y'all have a lot of visitors come there, don't you?
We do. We do have a lot of visitors.
And a lot of people from out of town.
It's amazing how many people don't know it's there, and you're missing out on something. That's, that's a great deal back there to.
We had a wedding back there, I think, last fall sometime. Somebody showed up and just hosted their wedding, so it's a really beautiful garden, so we're hoping to get some more people in there.
I appreciate the detailed information that came along with this agenda item. Answered all my questions.
Perfect, I'm glad.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to allow AgriLife Extension and Lake Granberry Master Gardeners to place a sign facing Deputy Larry Miller Drive as outlined in the proposal.
Second.
Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow AgriLife Extension and Lake Granberry Master Gardeners to place a sign facing Deputy Larry Miller Drive, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion?
It was, he made the motion.
Yeah, he said it, he said Samuel.
Andrews.
All right. With that small correction, okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Okay. Item number three. Authorized the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the use of the square parking lot beginning at noon, June 30th through 8:00 PM, July 4th, for the Chamber of Commerce Annual Old Fashioned Fourth of July Event, contingent upon proof of insurance. That's something we do every year. It's something very special here to Hood County and Granbury, and we do have the proof of insurance here. So I'll make the motion to allow the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the use of the square, beginning at noon, June 30th through 8:00 PM on July 4th, for the Chamber of Commerce Annual Old Fashioned Fourth of July Event. Second. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number four. Consider and take appropriate action for the annual renewal of RFB 2019-003 Bulk Waste CCS and Service to Waste Connection with Price Increase. We got Mr. Glenn Tillman here. Mr. Tillman.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This item is to renew the bulk waste contract for the Citizens' Collection Station. It does come with a 3% increase this year and a disposal rate increase to $45 a ton, which is still well below the going rate. This is the final renewal of the contract, so it will be rebid next year. At that, I believe this remains a good value for the county, critical service for the citizens, and an important relationship to maintain. Thank you.
Any further comment or questions of Mr. Tillman here? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to take appropriate, to approve the annual renewal of RFB 2019-003 Bulk Waste CCS and Services to Waste Connections with the price increase that he has mentioned.
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the annual renewal of RFB 2019-003, the Bulk Waste CCS and Services to Waste Connections with the price increases, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action for funding from five, from Fund 55 to replace failed standby boiler at the Hood County Jail. Here's our friend from the jail, Mr. Jay Riley.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I, we've got two hot water boilers at the jail, y'all know about that. A lot of y'all have already seen them. So I have a spare boiler there now, it's failed due to a cracked heat exchanger. Heat exchanger is about $30,000 to replace, so I've decided it's better to just go with a new one, and it's a little better unit. I've already currently have one of these units. I'm currently not having any problems with this unit. So, I kind of looked at it last year, and I kind of ran it while it was leaking, and now it's getting to the point I can't run it anymore. And I figured I better act, because exactly a year ago, this particular unit was $78,000. Just in our economy that we're suffering through right now, it's up to $81,000. So I feel like I need to act, I need to bring it to your attention. In the event one that I've got fails, we won't have any hot water.
That means we would fail the jail standards, of course.
Yes, sir, we would fail, and, and I think this is a good item to consider.
Okay. And Ms. Kidd, we got the money in Fund 55 to do this? Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve to use some money from Fund 55 to replace the failed standby boiler at the Hood County Jail.
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to use Fund 55 to replace the failed standby boiler at the Hood County Jail, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, I appreciate the help.
Okay. All right, item number six. Discuss proposal outlined by Chief Appraiser last March to build a $6.5 million new facility to serve as offices for the Hood County Central Appraisal District. And we've got a couple of speakers here on this items. The first speaker is Mr. Rick Frye.
Honorable Judge and Commissioners, I'm your appointed representative, by the way, of the appraisal board. This is something that's been considered before I even came on the board. I think we have one member that was on board when this was originally proposed. The facility that we're currently in, we've outgrown. As the county expands and the number of parcels increases, so does the workload and for the appraisers. When you have a 400-acre parcel and it's divided up into half-acre lots, you can see that now instead of appraising one partial, parcel, we're, we're, we have, you know, so many more, and we have to look at each one individually, so the workload's increased. That's just one problem. The other problem we have is that we have no public restroom facilities, and we have no handicap restroom facilities. If we had the most qualified candidate to come to us and warrant, to apply for an opening, right now, we can't accommodate them because we're not in compliance. And so it's a serious problem from that liability standpoint, that we really have to do something. We've, we've, they retained an architect, he's here today. The facility that, the whole $6.5 million, if you look at that, that also includes a shell that has been proposed for housing a regional full-service DPS office. Those contacts have been made, I have not personally made them. Mark Jackson's kind of took, taken the lead on that, and the DPS has given their nod that they approve the plans. They think that the space is adequate for their needs, and they looked at the layout. But the funding has to come from the state legislature for anything like that. That portion of the building is just under $1.5 million. The way the building's been designed, that can be omitted, and that would bring down the cost. The cost estimates were made when building was in its prime. We think that if we went out to bids, that those bids would be somewhat less today than that $6.5 million that, that we've given you. That also contains a 20% contingency fund, which is very liberal, so there shouldn't be any problems. It includes an exchange of property with the school district. We're adjacent to the high school facility, and they have discussed, and we have got appraisals on the property, that that exchange, so the property itself would be, just, it would be over $500,000, the exchange, which would be a, a very good use of their building for the school district. It would be a very good location for us, which is out on Acton School Road and Highway Four. We've looked at alternatives, we looked around for, are, is there any space available in the immediate area where we could move the facility, do a remodel, and make it fit our, our needs? Quite frankly, there's not a lot of vacant commercial property in Hood County. There's just not. We've looked, some of the properties we looked at were just too small, or we had parking problems, we had access problems, and nothing was, was even close to being appropriate. We have, through the mayor, I've looked at, personally, I've looked at the Decker Gym property. Could we use Decker Gym property? And I say Decker Gym because it's adjacent to the property that would be usable. The gym itself, I don't think that it would be financially responsible to go in there and redo the gym for our needs. Now, if we took from the, the door out in the hallway and use the older classrooms that are there to remodel, and the city currently has in, in the rear of that building, they've remodeled and have their parking recreation office is there, and they've done a very nice job. Could that be done? Yes, it could. Would it serve the long-term goals? And I'll state personally that, that as a board member, our mission is to be very responsible in collecting the taxes that ultimately are passed on to you in a timely manner, so you can budget and use those funds. We need to be user-friendly, nobody likes to pay taxes, so when we go there, we don't need to be in a position that we aggravate them because of inconvenience, because, do we need a Taj Mahal? Absolutely not. I think that would be sort of an affront to our citizens if we made it too fancy. I think we just need to make it very functional. I think we need to, to, to work so that we are assessing the property, we get those assessments out. Our collections need to be to the point that, that we are responsive to your needs and the needs of all the taxpayers in Hood County, and that's our goal. I'll open up, if you have questions, I may be glad to answer them.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, I toured the, the Decker Gym facility, and I know that there's a, an estimate out there for what it would take to, to do the remodeling. There's a little asbestos in there that would have to be abated, and a couple other things, but that was a, you know, like a million-dollar quote on that. That looks like a great facility. I mean, I, I would like to explore that option as opposed to, you know, putting a significant, a significant cost on the taxpayer on that, so.
There's about a 200, about $250,000 worth of remediation. The city actually did a survey of that building. There is about $250,000 of asbestos remediation to be done. You know, quite frankly, I looked at that building, and I was, I was trying to visualize, how do we incorporate drive-up window, so people don't have to get out of their vehicle? You know, we have to look at restroom facilities, office facilities, cabling for computers. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done. I have no idea. The city's estimate to convert some of it was some $600,000. I suspect we would put $2 million in that particular location if, if we were to do that. Again, I, I stress that I don't think that the, the gym portion of that building would be something that would be good for us. I think it would be better served if, for the community, if that was, you know, the Hood County Sports Hall of Fame, or something that was, was something that was giving back to the community. I don't, I have not talked to anybody about that, it's just an idea that popped into my head, but, of course, when you're talking about that, you're, you're talking about asbestos abatement, replacing all the heating and cooling facilities, there's going to be some jackhammering done, there's going to be a lot of plumbing, because we are going to have to comply. There's going to be some paving and parking, there will be with the new building. But there's a lot of things that we would have to address, and, and quite frankly, we don't have an estimate for that to give to you right now. Kevin, thank you. Any questions?
What is the percentage of people, taxpayers, that have their taxes EFT, whether it's from their escrow account, or they do it online? Of all the population that's paying taxes, what percent actually physically come to the building versus?
Mailing them in?
Either mail, online, or they're EFT directly from their mortgage company?
To be honest, I don't know that number. I, I will tell you, there's a lot of people, and especially the senior community, that likes to go in there and hand off that check to make sure that it's in their hands. I do know that. That can be accommodated with a drive-up window to help them, you know, facilitate that, so they didn't have to leave, but I don't know what the actual percentage is. I'm just honest.
I just think as time goes on, as the, there's a high percentage of people that do have mortgages, and those are EFT directly to you from the escrow account. Then as, as the online generation becomes more and more of, of the homeowners, they prefer to do things online, we, we know that. So, people actually coming to the building, the reason people come to the building, maybe to protest their taxes, you know, have meetings there, we could partially solve that if we don't have unreasonable appraisals. And then also, have you looked into other places to have these meetings, the protest meetings? For example, the library has, has offices or conference rooms that you could use for that purpose. There's also NX1 that could be used for that purpose, and maybe even, I see Dr. Glenn in the background, I was just asking, what the room that's used once a month for the school board meeting, what is that used for the rest of the month? Is there a possibility there that that meeting, that building could be used, or that room could be used for protests? And then one more thing is, for the, as you said, the workload's increasing for the appraisers. Remote work is, is not a new thing. There's not really a reason that people have to be in the same spot to do their job. They could work remotely from their house, or some other place in the county. I don't really see the need for them to all be in the same place with, you know, it's not a, it's not a new thing for people to work remotely. So, those are my concerns. The other concern I have is $6.5 million on a building for people to go to pay their taxes. That's not, when we look at what the needs are in the county, schools, security at the schools, roads, first responders, I'm not sure that the taxpayers would say that building, spending $6.5 million of their taxpayer money. spending $6.5 million of their taxpayer money for building a nice place to go pay their taxes would be what they would say is important to them.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. I'm not, I'm not sure about the remote technology as far as being able to conduct the ARB hearings as far, because I do know that they rely on the computers and to be able to pull up that information. So I don't really know about the technology into that, whether it could be done remotely as far as another facility. The, excuse me, if you look at the building itself, the front counter where people come pay their taxes is a very small portion of that building. Right now, we have one small room with computers that we have a board meeting and they do the ARB. Commissioner Eagle was there our last meeting, and he can tell you that space for the public to attend is pretty limited right now. Is there another solution? We're certainly open to any discussion and ideas that you might have. We've tried to be judicial in looking at other properties to see what's out there that we might be able to purchase and remodel to be a much better dollar spent. We're just, we're just in a drought as far as the number of buildings that are available. We're in a booming, we're in a booming community. It's a great, it's a great problem to have on one side, but it also is challenging on the other. Growth is, is, static businesses are not good for a community. They, if you don't improve, you sort of die. And we're in, we're in the growth phase, I think we'll continue to grow, and we just, we want to be able to serve the community and serve the entities, the ten community, entities that we collect taxes for in the most efficient way possible, and I appreciate your comments. Anything else?
Anything else?
Not, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay.
Judge, Judge Matt, may I? I just, since the door got opened on this, and I don't want to, I want to let all the speakers come up, whoever have signed up. And I put this on the agenda, by the way, for this very reason, for folks to come up here and give us, I did go to the meeting last week to their board meeting, and I had the great opportunity to meet Mr. Richard Petrie. And I remember your name because Rob Petrie was Dick Van Dyke's character in, in the Dick Van Dyke Show, so I just equated that and then went to Petrie Dish. Sorry I had to do the Petrie Dish part, but I think I got your name correct. And one thing that, when we talk about remote technology, I listened to the last part of the agenda, the last agenda item was the chief appraiser's report. And Mr. Petrie, at that time, had been here five days. And he has already looked, one of the items, let me get a little background here. One of the items on their, presenting on their new budget is to ask for another, an additional appraiser, another body in there. And he pointed out that based on the technology that we have right now, and you can correct me anytime I misquote, that our appraisers were doing on average of about 3,500 appraisals per year. And he came over here from Abilene when he was chief appraiser in Abilene, and they were up to nine, they were doing 9,000 appraisals a year. So you can see that right, and how do they do that? Well, it's not saying that our guys right now, folks right now are not doing, working hard, it's just they don't have the tools that they need, if I understand it, Mr. Petrie correctly. So in my view, and I kind of echo Commissioner Samuelson's idea that really, especially, COVID has taught us one thing, we can do a lot of stuff out in the field and with the proper technology. So I think we need to look more into putting money in that direction to possibly, I mean, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, like, threaten anybody's job, but I'm wondering if we need how many appraisers we got now. So I think there needs to be a pretty big discussion on this, and that's one reason, that's the main reason I put it out here on the table, because according to the, according to the tax code, and then I'll shut up for, I meant for a while. According to the tax code, section 6.051, the board decides, a board of directors may purchase or lease real property and may construct improvements as necessary. However, part B of that section states that it has to come to all the taxing entities, and they vote on it by three-quarters in favor. And so we need to have a pretty full discussion on this, and I wanted to get it here to Commissioner's Court to at least get the ball in here. I know I spoke to Dr. Glenn last week as well, and he was not aware of even any kind of a deal made as far as the property that they're talking about, where they want to put this $6.5 million facility. They don't even have a deal made with the school yet, as far as I know. Is that correct, Dr. Glenn? Come on up.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Eagle. So just to be clear, our board has discussed it, going back to when Mark Jackson was president, and he now serves on the appraisal board. But as far as any official action, our board has not taken such action.
Thank you.
Could you clarify my question on the room that's used for the school board meetings? Is that used off and on during the month, or is it mostly not used?
Probably most of the time, it's not in use, and so as with most district facilities, those facilities are available to the public. We have facility use agreements, and so if that were something HCAD would be interested in, obviously, they could come up and talk to our facilities manager and reserve it.
Just a place to have protest meetings if they needed extra space.
And just to your point, and I don't want to take up any time, but I know Commissioner Eagle's reached out, Judge Massengill's reached out. After the initial meeting with HCAD, when Eddie Rowe was still chief appraiser, received a call from the city, just with concerns, and something that had the opportunity to visit with Chris Kaufman about, and since then, Commissioner Eagle and Judge Massengill. There is, to my, it is my understanding, a resolution has to come before all entities, and there are 10 entities in the appraisal district. But a resolution has to come before all entities giving options as to what, what all the entities should consider as far as the growth of the appraisal district. Our board has not seen that yet. I'm sure that is coming. After, after that is approved by the entities, then the discussion of land, which we do understand, and the district is very, has a lot of interest in the land conversation because we make up just over 60% of every dollar spent through the appraisal district. And the last thing we want is for the appraisal district to go purchase a million dollars worth of property somewhere else when we have that property in-house, because that will save us about $600,000. The county, you're vested as well. 25% of every dollar spent at the appraisal district, just under, comes from the county. So if we're talking about spending $600 million or $6.5 million, 25% of that will come out of county funds. Just under 10% comes from the city of Granbury. So when you put all that together, just over 90% of every dollar spent comes from those three entities. And, you know, just in having conversations with people at the county and the city level, it's important that we're all on the same page, and even Commissioner, Commissioner Eagle, throughout the idea of maybe a subcommittee of the school, the city, and in the county getting together to have these conversations with the HCAD board. I know some members of the HCAD board are present today, I do want to thank them, it's a thankless job. I feel like there's a lot going on with the hiring of a new chief appraiser, and also all of the HCAD board is up for reelection this year, which means the county, the school, and the city will be looking to either reappoint or appoint new directors. So there's a lot going on at HCAD right now, and certainly, we want to work with the county and the city to make sure that we do the best for our taxpayers, so.
Yeah, and, you know, with all due respect to Mr. Frye and the board, I mean, I certainly appreciate, I mean, I know that they've put in some, a lot of effort on this, and so I'm not in any way detracting from that. You know, my, my main comment right now, and the main reason I'm trying to get this on here, is to get it on the table, A, and B, go, is this the, and I know I get chastised for saying this by my Democrat opponents, but do we need to do something about this right this minute with, under the circumstances, with seeking a new chief appraiser, getting a new set of eyes into the office looking at things? You know, I'm thinking, maybe we, maybe we just kind of tap the brakes on this a little bit, and so, and certainly, it may end up that we go this route. I'm not saying that we wouldn't go that route. I'm just saying, I'm not sure that right now is the best time to do it. But anyway, thank you for being here.
And to your point, staggered terms is something that we also need to look at for the appraisal board. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Tina Brown.
I wish y'all would remind people to speak into the microphone. Thank you, Dave, for putting this on here. If you did not go to one of these meetings with the county, the city, and the school district, you don't know what the proposal is. I still don't know what the proposal is, other than $6.5 million. So are those, were those meetings recorded? Are they out there somewhere that we can see them? Can you, or do I just come to your office and you show me the proposal? Because I have not seen a proposal.
Well, in answer to your question, the, the school board and the county and the city council met up in city council chambers in our, I think we do this once a quarter. We all just get together and kind of roundtable it. It was noticed, it was up in the city council chambers, but we were given, we can get copies made, we were given a proposal
Okay.
By the chief appraiser at the time, Eddie Rowe, as well as some financial documents. And, and sorry you didn't get notice of that.
That's fine, I mean, but it would have been nice if those things could have been hyperlinked to the agenda, so I could have looked over them, and anybody else could have looked over them, so we knew what we were talking about, if we, if anybody wanted to talk, because.
Well, that's, that's my bad. I just, I didn't think, I didn't think it through enough to do that, but I apologize for that.
We could still post it on our website if.
Well, that would be great. Just, just because, I mean, it's like, I know that we all have to work together, but $6.5 million for a building to pay taxes at? And if you go up there on January 31st, you will see how many people walk in there and wait for a written, a printed receipt. It's ridiculous. I mean, I do go up there and pay mine, but I just drop it off in the window, but, you know, I don't want to pay them early, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Dr. Harold Granik.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I know that the Commissioner's Court can multitask, and, but I want to remind everybody that we've studied endlessly the jail issue, which is, seems to be a much more pressing issue. And even in the previous agenda item, we put another Scotch tape on that. That seems to be very pressing. While this has been presented having multiple options, I agree with my Commissioner Eagle that there's, seems to be, this seems to be available for more study because there may be better options, Commissioner Eagle, Commissioners Samuelson. So I think we should look at this more, press harder on our jail issue. Thank you.
Do you have, Dr. Granik, do you have any of your heart materials? Because I think I'm fixing to have a heart attack that you agreed with. Stethoscope or anything?
No, but if your eyes are having a problem, I can deal with that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that includes, that concludes all the comments about six on the deal. So I guess it was discussing a proposed outline, it's no meant to, no action to be taken, correct, Commissioner Eagle?
Yes, sir. The only other thing that, if nobody else has a comment, I will close it with, you know, there's statutory authority out, authority out there on how this is done. We have, we have, again, we've got, Mr. Richard Petrie has been here less than two weeks, and he's very knowledgeable and very welcome here. And in fact, if it's not too much of an embarrassment, if Mr. Petrie could come to the podium to, so we, I, we can introduce you, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
And I, you know, I'd just like everyone to, this is Mr. Richard Petrie, and he has, since Eddie Rowe has left, he's in here to help us bridge the gap, I guess is the best way I can come up with it. You got anything to add, sir?
Just a couple of things. The lady that expressed the concern about the agenda, the process will be that I are the, the following, the full-time chief appraiser, when that person is selected, will come to you with probably the board chairman, and we will officially ask each tax unit for this approval. And each one will, that will, there will be a lot of opportunity for discussion at that time, input from the community, the other things that will go on during that time period. So there are still, this is not cut and dried by any means. A couple of comments. I've been in the business a long time, I was chief appraiser in Abilene for 37 years, and retired from that, and have a company that does appraisal work in 41 counties across Texas. So I'm involved a lot. I think the, in the, looking at the cost that's been proposed, I believe it's excessive. And I think that when we see the bids come in on this, you will be pleasantly surprised. This is not, as our board chairman said, this is not a Taj Mahal. It, and, but it's been priced like one. And so I feel like maybe the architect has been up here, and then when the number comes in at lesser amount than that, then he'll feel great, and we'll all feel good about that. But bottom line is, there's still work to be done on this. I will be taking instructions from the board of directors as to how quickly we move forward. I'll tell you that we do have ads in the appropriate journals for people. I have received three applications from folks in the state. I think you will get good applicants, people, it's a beautiful place to be, it's, you know, obviously, close to the Metroplex. I think that, that Hood County is right on the cusp of doing what has gone on in Denton County and Collin County before that. I think you're just poised for tremendous growth. I did a study for Denton County about a year ago now, and was able to give them some suggestions, ideas for working smarter. My idea is, with the cost of people these days, if you can figure out a way to do it with technology, then that's, that's a obvious step forward. And the software that you have works, and it does, does fine, but it's not state-of-the-art. And the gathering of information throughout the county using iPad technology, importing that information straight into the system, just, it's just a lot of things that you can do to produce the product at a higher level, higher quality, and also at a lesser cost. So I'll be studying, I've told the board, I'll be studying all of that, giving them, and then whoever the new chief appraiser is chosen, they will have that opportunity to look at the ideas that I'm suggesting, and then they'll move forward with that. But that, that's a kind of a broad view of what I wanted to share with you, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm not here every day, I, because of all the other commitments that I have, but I will do what is necessary, and, and you're not paying me on this big number, you're paying me on a daily rate, so that, if you're concerned about the expenditures, you're spending less than you were with the chief appraiser. So hopefully, we'll, we'll get this, there are many, many protests, we have over 8,000 protests this year, we're working through those as rapidly as possible. One of the things that needs to happen is to, for the appraisal review board to expand in size, especially when they get a new facility, or either a new facility or somewhere, a new place to work. We need to go to panels so that we can move through the appraisal process and the appeals process more rapidly. But. And last year in Taylor, we had a total of 2,800 protests. We're about one and a half times as large as Hood County, and as far as numbers of people. So we had a lot more people, a lot fewer protests, and the reason why is that you, you do the job really well, and you have, you're very transparent with your public, and you try to do the very best that you can in the, out the gate, and then it just makes it go a lot more smoothly. So I'm sorry to, I know I got way off the building there, but I, I think it goes back to the size of the building, and it goes back to the construction and style of the building as to, again, focusing on working smarter.
Well, we appreciate your coming down here and helping us out. I understand that you're saying that you can keep the deadlines that the county has set and work with our county auditor up here in the budget. That's what we're really concerned about, right, Ms. Kid?
Yes. Yes. And we will continue to keep all of our tax units aware of where we are on these protests and the values, keep them, showing them the changes that are occurring in those values.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming down and assisting us.
One more last little item, Judge, and Mr. Petrie. So at, at the board meeting last week, they had, they had the audit, their auditor, auditing firm, come in with their annual audit. And just to, just to throw this on the table, they had a 500, make sure I've got it right, And they voted to put it into the fund balance for specific item of, for the building, for any building that might happen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So they're, they're working on it themselves as well. So just wanted to point that out, you know, just to inform people, it's, it's, it wouldn't be all coming out of the taxing entities, it's, it's, some of it's already there, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
The district's been saving money for several years.
Right. So, thank you.
I, I do have a question. The 8% protest and compared to Taylor, could you put those in percentages is, is, I'm sorry, 8,000 protests compared to the number of protests? And then you said Taylor had a certain amount. Could, could you put that in percentage? What percentage of all the protest, all the appraisals are protested in Hood County compared to Taylor?
Hood is more like in the 15% range, and we were in the 2% to 3% range. And actual formal hearings, so many times, and I've, I've talked to the staff about this and, and am expecting them to work with people. Now, you don't, you don't give away value. You don't just say, oh, okay, what do you want as a value? You say, here's, here's the data that I have, let me look at your data, and then we try to work out an agreement. We settled 95% of the cases in Taylor. Now, that goes back to trust from your people. If, if the people don't trust the district, whether it's in Taylor or whether it's in Hood, then they're going to be less likely to agree. But if you have a lot of good data that you share with the people, then I think you can settle a lot more cases and not have to go to the formal appeals process. We generally had 200 to 400 formal protests. So it, it's, you can do this, and, and you can do it better, but we're going to work on that.
And so Commissioner Eagle got me thinking about this question while he was talking. The $549,000 or whatever the number was, so where did that money come from? Wasn't that the assessments from the taxing entities in prior years that wasn't used for expenses?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. So it's still, it's all taxpayer money, correct?
It is taxpayer money, and it is board-designated and cannot be spent without the approval of the board. And so it's setting in, it's all, it's still your money at this point.
Okay.
Based upon the way that you paid the money in, by law, it is.
Okay.
And the board could later on say, well, I think we're going to go a different direction. We're not going to spend it. Then they, they certainly could come back and refund that money to you.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, that the, the money got there from assessments from the taxing entities in the first place?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, any surplus that's left, it's just like a fund balance for the county.
Okay.
It is a fund balance for the appraisal district, but it's, it's more restricted in appraisal districts than it is for county government.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So there's actually no action to be taken on item number six at this point. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This brings us to item number seven. Discuss and consider for approval allowing two 13-star Hopkinson flags to be displayed at the historical courthouse grounds and for the use of the gazebo from 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Flag Day, Wednesday, June 14th, hosted by Friends of Memorial Lane. Gary Foreman, an award-winning filmmaker and historian, will give a small presentation, and parking places will be blocked on the Bridge Street side of the parking lot from Crockett Street to Houston Street for this presentation. That's just for that two-hour period of time. The Friends of Memorial Lane specifically, we've got a representative here, Ms. Landem here, but Julia Pennell, I think this is an excellent opportunity. We have never really celebrated Flag Day specifically here in Hood County, and these two Hopkinson flags are very historical. And Gary Foreman is a, really a well-known documentary producer, and he has these flags. And with the assistance, once again, of Jay Riley, who never lets this county down, he will assist in, in stringing these, this flag, this huge flag between the two trees out at, by General Granberry there, between those. And we'll have a flag-raising ceremony at 8:30 if the Commissioners Court will go ahead and give us permission to go ahead and do this ceremony. I think it'll be a very moving ceremony, and we're going to invite everybody, and please tell your friends and neighbors, if this passes, I'm kind of talking like it's a done deal. And we'd really like for y'all to do this. I think it's going to be a, not, not much is known about the Hopkinson flag. In fact, I've never heard of it until Julia Pennell called me about it and talked to me about this. But I think this is a very worthwhile endeavor, and certainly would like the McMahons to come out, if you could come out there and see this. So really, and that includes you, me, as ever, Sandy also. So with that, I would like to, if any other people have any discussion about it, I'd like to move that we allow the two 13-star Hopkinson flags to be displayed at the historical courthouse grounds and for the use of the gazebo from 8:30 a.m. to 10 o'clock a.m. on Flag Day, Wednesday, June 14th, hosted by Friends of Memorial Lane. And Gary Foreman will make a small presentation, and the parking places will, Jay Riley will put them in the gazebo, and, and Julia and Bob Pennell will just block off that one area, and it won't interfere with the merchants, because the stores don't open till 10:00, and the presentation will be over by then. And it's just on that one side of the parking place. So that's my convoluted motion. And second, by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Thank y'all all very much. This will be a great ceremony. Okay. Now, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda or make any comment? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second, by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Okay. This now brings us to development. You have no road ops, so Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
First item we have today is setting the public hearing for the replat of Vista Oaks, Phase 2, Lot 18R, Block 1, and Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for this replat for the July 25th, Commissioners Court.
July 25th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to set the hearing for the replat of Vista Oaks, Phase 2, Lot 18R, Walk 1, and Precinct 2 for July 25th, 2023.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Anderson to, Samuelson to set the replat public hearing for Vista Oaks for July 25th, 2023, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Next.
Next, we have a final plat of Tiddler Granberry Place, Lot 1, lots 1 and 2, and Block 1. This final plat is located at 4,400 U.S. Highway 377 in Granberry. It's part of the Ebenezer Millikan survey, abstract 414, and the J.W. Omsby survey, abstract number 814. The property is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 1 and is served by well and onsite sewage facility. There is one variance associated with this replat that will have to be approved prior to or simultaneously as the plat, as long as it's first in the motion. The variance is to section 2, section 6.4F concerning the building lines along the roads. Section 6.4F requires a 25-foot building line adjacent to the right-of-way of Sunset Acres Court and a 50-foot building line adjacent to the right-of-way of U.S. Highway 377. Dedicating these sized building lines would create two encroachments. This is a justifiable hardship for granting a variance to the greatest building line allowed by, without creating an encroachment. They are requesting a variance to dedicate a 15-foot building line along Sunset Acres Court and a 35-foot building line along 377. Staff has no objection to this variance, because existing buildings would encroach and require the building setback, into the required building setback and create a hardship. The court chooses to grant the variances. Staff recommends conditional approval of the final plat contingent upon the permitting and installation of a new onsite sewage facility for Lot 2.
Okay. Any questions or comment? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll give this a shot. Make a motion that we grant the variance to allow a 15-foot building line along Sunset Acres Court and a 35-foot building line along 377 back from the state right-of-way, and conditionally approve the plat as long as they get onsite sewage facilities permitted on, permitted on that property.
Second. A motion has been made to grant the conditional variance, well...
A variance and conditional approval.
Yeah. And grant the variance on these deals made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Next item.
Next item is a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Holiday Estates, Lot 1R, and Precinct 3.
Okay. At now, at 10:20, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing. Okay.
The property is located in the Water Quality District, 4607 East Holiday Estates Drive in Granberry. This replat is being done to combine lots 1 and 2 into one 0.539 of an acre lot. This lot is served by A.M.D. Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. There are no variances associated with this replat, and staff recommends approval of the replat as presented, as long as there's no speakers.
Any questions or comments? Okay. If not, at 10:21, we're going to convene back into a Commissioners Court. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
I move that we approve the replat of Canyon Creek, I'm sorry, of replat of Holiday Estates, Lot 1R.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of Holiday Estates, Lot 1R, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Next item.
Second of many public hearings today. To discuss and consider the replat of Canyon Creek 3, Lot 183R, and Precinct 2.
At this time, at 10:22, we're going to convene into a public hearing. Please continue.
The property is located in the Rural District at 5650 Black Pine Drive in Granberry. This replat is being done to combine lots 183 and 184 into one zero, or into one lot, and that's the wrong acreage, but anyway. The lot is served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. There are no variances associated with this replat. Staff recommends approval of the replat of Canyon Creek 3, Lot 183R, as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comment? If not, at 10:22, we're going to reconvene back into the Commissioners Court. Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Canyon Creek 3, Lot 18R, to combine two lots into one lot, as presented.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the replat of Canyon Creek 3, Lot 183R, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. All right, next item.
Next item is a plat revision, or it's a public hearing for discussing, consider the plat revision of the landings Lot 3285R through 3287R in Precinct 2.
Okay. At this time, at 10:23 a.m., we're convening into a public hearing. Please continue, Mr. Head.
These properties are located in the Water Quality District on Gulf Stream Drive in Granberry. This replat is being done to correct a minimum finished floor elevations that are on the plat due to scribner's error. None of the boundary lines of these lots nor their areas are being modified and will remain the same as the legally recorded lot. These lots are served by A.M.D. Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. Staff recommends approval of the revision of the replats of the, for the, revision of the plat for the landings Lot 3285R through 3287R as presented.
Any comment or questions? If not, at 10:24, we're going to convene back into Commissioners Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the plat revision of the landings lots 3285R through 3287R as presented.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the plat revision of the landings lots 328, 3285R, and 3287R, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Next.
Next is a public hearing for a site development plan for Ne-Ri Road Shops.
Okay. At this time, at 10:25, we're going to, going to a public hearing. Please continue, Mr. Head.
This property of the site development plan is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 2 and will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Property is located at 6,600 Glen Rose Highway, Granberry. The site development plan is on Lot 2 of 144 Place Subdivision. The proposed site development plan proposes to construct six 2,500-square-foot metal buildings with parking. They're designed to hold three employees per day, but not full-time around the clock the sewer system is. There are no variances associated with this site development plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the site development plan as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I got a question. You've been here all your life, right? Pronounce that road one more time, will you?
Ne-Ri.
Ne-Ri.
I get it wrong every time. Thank you.
So does Siri.
Okay. Not, at 10:26, we're convening back into Commissioners Court. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider, to approve the site development plan of Ne-Ri Road Shops in Precinct 2 as presented.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the site development plan of Ne-Ri Road Shops, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Next item.
Two more. We have a public hearing for a site development plan for 2425 shops.
Okay. At this time, at 10:27, we convene into a public hearing.
This property for this site development plan is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 2 and will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Property is located at 2729 Mam...
Okay, at this time, at 10:27, we convene into a public hearing.
This property for this site development plan is located in the Road Corridor District and Precinct Two, will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Property is located at 2729 Mambreno Highway, Granbury, Texas. The site development plan is on 1.789 acres tract, which is part of the Wary Adams Abstract Survey, abstract number one. The proposed site development plan proposes to construct three 2,000-square-foot metal buildings designed for three people per day to occupy as an office space with parking. There are no variances associated with this site development plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends conditional approval contingent upon text dots review of the culvert permit, of the site development plan for the culvert permit.
Any question or comment? If not, at 10:27, we convene back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve, conditionally approve, the site development plan for the 2425 shops that are at 2729 Mambreno Highway, conditionally approved on text dot review of the culvert.
Second. Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Samuelson for conditional approval of 2425 Shops, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five-zero. This is the one we're looking for.
Finally, one for Kevin.
Okay.
We have a public hearing for a site development plan for Williamson Road Shops.
Okay, at 10:28, we're going to convene into a public hearing. Any questions or comment?
Go ahead.
The property for this site development plan is located in the Road Corridor District and Precinct One, and will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. The property is located at 5,309 Glen Rose Highway, Granbury, Texas. It's at the corner of Williamson Road and Glen Rose Highway. The site development plan is on a 2.04 acres part of the George Wilcoxen survey, abstract number 579. The proposed site development plan proposes to construct five 2,250-square-foot metal buildings designed for three people per day to occupy as an office space with parking. There are no variances associated with this site development plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the site development plan as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, at this time, at 10:31, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the development plan of Williamson Road Shops.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the development plan of Williamson Road Shops, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Head. Next, Ms. Becky Kidd, financial.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Today before you, you have received information regarding the expenditures for this court, which are $842,402.95. The auditor's office has reviewed these invoices, and we recommend payment.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion. We pay the bills for $842,402.95.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the bills from May 17th to June 6th, 2023, in an amount of $842,402.95, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Next.
And you were given a spreadsheet of expenditures over $10,000. Were there any questions regarding those?
Okay.
All right, the last two items I have are the 2023 review of Constable Precinct Two, Constable Precinct Four, their financial records. We found no issues with these departments, and if you don't mind, we'll just ask you to accept both of them.
Okay.
Motion to accept 2023 review of Constable Precinct Two and Constable Precinct Four financial records as stated.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to accept the 2023 review of Constable Precinct Two financial records, and 2023 review of Constable Precinct Four financial records, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any question or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five-to-zero. Does that conclude what you have?
Yes, sir.
And that concludes the agenda. Thank you very much. This Commissioners' Court is adjourned.